This meeting is being recorded.
Scheduled meeting for Riedel City Council, July 20th, 2021. And as the Mayor Pro-Tam and the excuse, excuse the absence of Mayor Lawrence, I'll be chairing this meeting. Roll call please.
Mayor Lawrence?
Excuse?
Mayor Pro-Tam Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
Please stand and join me with special allegiance. My final allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, and one pride, indivisible, first and foremost, in this small. The city manager has some comments about the order of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tam Johnson. Good evening and welcome to the July 20th, 2021 Riedel City Council meeting. Before we get started, there are some modifications to this meeting format that we want to make sure everyone understands. First, there are requirements for those attending this meeting in person that are set by Cal motion. At the door, there is self attestation form related to vaccination status. If you have not filled it out either tonight or at a previous council meeting, please do so now. If you're back fully vaccinated, you do not need to wear a mask during this meeting. However, if you are still unvaccinated or in the process, we ask that you wear masks during this meeting. There are masks available towards the door. We also highly suggest using the hand sanitizer. As always, if you start to feel ill, please head home. Again, these are the requirements for being able to hold these meetings in person, keep everyone safe, keep our doors open to the public and the economy moving forward. Second, as you can see, we have some changes in this chamber to allow for hybrid meetings for people to attend in person and also virtually via Zoom. This is in an effort to expand safe access to these meetings for members of the public. This is a new system and we are working on it and we will be improving it over time. However, the most important thing to remember is that during the meeting of the Riedel City Council, only one person may speak at any time. And it is important that the person speak clearly and loudly. Strict adherence to decorum and protocol will be especially needed to help make sure we continue to be able to provide this extended access to virtual participants. As such, I will, the Mayor Pro-Tam will remind all council members, public attendees, and staff that you will need to be called upon by the Mayor Pro-Tam in order to speak. Likewise, any speaker who holds the floor should not be interrupted other than by the Mayor Pro-Tam for this meeting. This has been parliamentary procedure, but it also helps to ensure greater public participation in the process. So I'll just briefly go over the technology that we have implemented here in the council chambers. In the, in the chambers, we have two meeting owls that are networked together that will be scanning the room following those who speak. It especially helps when you speak loudly and clearly towards the microphone. It will pick up all the noise in the room and zero in on, on the speaker. And then it's obviously displayed up here on, on the screens. So with that, we did have a snapu at our last meeting in terms of implementing this. And it was definitely a fluke related to Microsoft updating some drivers on our laptop. But we do, we do think we have this thing squared away for tonight's meeting. And certainly we'll be, we'll be receiving some feedback, which we appreciate from those attending via Zoom, which there are several folks attending via Zoom. But the meeting is also captured on access homeholds who are tuning into the meeting through the owls and through the Zoom platform. So with that, Mr. Mayor Pro-Tam, I will return it back here to you.
Thank you, City Manager. Next item on this agenda, ceremonial matters. Certificate of appreciation to Marlene Snell. And it reads as follows, certificate of appreciation presented to Marlene Snell. Grateful appreciation and sincere thanks for the many years dedicated to the gardening at Triangle Park. Your commitment to our community is duly recognized and greatly appreciated. Signed by Mayor Taylor Lawrence. Is there anybody that would like to speak to that matter? How's Mayor Wood?
Marlene's been doing this for about over 10 years. And I never realized what a job it was when she decided that she can't do it anymore. I thought maybe I could do it. I had no idea how much work and time she spent over there. She always brought her own water to water all the plants. She also watered the library side, the plants underneath there. She weeded and she really did a fine job. And that's a long handed do it and I just wanted to thank her. I really appreciate what she's done.
Any other comments from council members? Good job. Yeah, it's anybody that takes on a commitment for a decade to kind of be not in the line of life, but on the sideline, making sure that our city is beautiful is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much, Marlene. Is there any comments from the public on this matter? No. Public presentation. This time is for persons who wish to address council on any matter not on the agenda which the council has jurisdiction. As such, dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Raffam Brown Act. Items requiring council action on this on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda consideration if the council reacts. Unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that an item came up after the agenda was posted and is of emergency nature required immediate action, please leave a comment. Come back in three minutes. Any comments from the public? Any emails or hand trays? No. Okay. Next item, consent calendar. Seven items on the consent calendar. My first two minutes of the July 6 regular meeting. Number two, approved resolution 1496-2021 to amend the city manager salary table. Item three, approved resolution 1497-2021 to amend the position allocation table and approving job description for new managed analysts one and two and senior positions. Item number four, group amendment to the city of Riedel employees' capital to include June 19th, which is June 19th, as the city recognized a holiday. Item number five, group resolution 1498 designating a voting delegate for the California Cities 2021 Annual Conference. Item six, authorized city manager and chief police assigned memorandum of understanding to the city of Fortuna for police dispatch services and adopting resolution 1499. And item seven, receiving file check register for June 2021. Any member of the council wishes to pull any of these items? Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to pull items two and three.
Two and three. Anybody else wish to pull an item?
No.
Are there any hand trays or emails? No. Okay. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve items one, four, two, seven. You have motion? Is there a second?
How second?
Motion and second, we'll call both please. Or two, no please, yeah. Motion carries four, zero with one absent. Mr. Wilson?
I'm just doing three. I'll hold the two together because they're tied together. But my, my question is primarily on two with the salary compensation schedule. You know, I guess some of these questions would be, I'm not sure if the city manager or finance director, city manager, the, the analyst position is primarily for the economic development to help you or assist you in your duties performing that.
So the analysts will be performing a variety of duties. The analyst position ideally will be assigned a pretty significant portfolio in economic development, but it won't necessarily be exclusive to economic development. All staff at the city wear multiple hats. So, you know, conceivably, the individual could be assigned roles in public works or could be assigned other research work related to council work or anything like that. So just like any other staff person, you know, they're going to have a pretty broad array of responsibilities. And part of that too will also be, you know, the qualifications of any applicant and whoever is hired. So somebody has a very strong background in economic development. Obviously, they would, you know, be receiving more of those projects if they have a particularly strong background in another area, they might take the lead on certain projects in concert with the city manager and management staff.
My, my main questions stem around at the salary allocation table. With great few Coffin Associates, they did a study that appears on recommending what to do with this job at the wages associated. They commented that all the competitor agencies that were getting, only one had 70% of that job description in it. So they weren't able to really fully give a recommendation. But they yet still came back and gave you some salary recommendations. And then when we come to the allocation table, there's quite a difference in particularly the senior analyst one was matched pretty almost identically to their recommendation. But in analyst two, which I believe is what we're hiring for, there's a 45% difference in the increase of what the city is offering compared to what Coffin Associates recommended. And that's in a range of 16 to, or 17 to $21,000 difference. So it's about half again as much. That's why I look at their job description and detail of that. Their job description is, looks like it was almost a copy paste of, that goes into our job description. So I'm wondering, what, what is the disparity that maybe goes on with Chyas?
So I am not aware of really what specifically you're referring to. If our finance director Cheryl Dillingham is online, you know, maybe she has some insight onto that. I don't know if she could be a muted pressing start.
Through the, through the mayor?
Yes, we're here.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not following that because I thought that we did the management analyst one, the management analyst two, and the senior management analyst at the recommendation, matched the recommendation from Coffin Associates. I will say I was not there when their memo came through, but I, I thought that we were doing exactly what they told us to do.
Well, the, to turn, on page 14 of our packet, they list the prices of analyst one would range in annual, they give it yearly, if you multiply by 12, it comes out in the annual. Time it was 35,900, 36,000 to roughly 43,000. Where in Riedel was off, was listing at 52,000 to 62,000. On analyst two, Coff is recommending roughly 40,000 to 48,000, where Riedel is recommending 57,000 to 69,000. And so that, that breaks down to a 45% difference higher than what Coffin Associates is recommending. What I, what I was going to do was make a proposal that we, that we accept staff's recommendations for the salary table and the job description and just amend it to accept cost wage recommendations as per their study. Does that sound, does that make sense?
If I understand you correctly, Councilmember Wilson, you're saying to accept what's on page, pages 12 and 13 of packet regarding management analyst one, management analyst two, and senior management analyst. But then in the salary ranges used with the ranges that are on page 14 of our stack or of our pack.
Is that correct? Right, down on 14, about it's the second to the last paragraph, there's a thing that says KNA conducted. In that range there, it tells you what they're starting in maximum range for analyst one is, and then what's the same thing for, what's starting in maximum for analyst two, and then what, what it is for analyst, for senior analysts. That those numbers in their study be what, be what would be placed in our salary allocation table.
Correct. We, is that a motion? That is a motion. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from council members?
I'm just still confused about this thing. It's locked right here.
Yeah. Well, basically, Julie, if we took these numbers and multiplied them out, we don't come up with what's in the table. And so the proposal, the motion is to have the numbers in the table correspond to the numbers.
And a 45% less?
It's saying some amount less, just saying, assuming that Riedel's, the table is 45% higher than what Coffin Associates recommend, a 50%.
Like in, through the, through the mayor, I, I think what ended up happening here is the, the memo came in just prior to publication. The, the information that's in the table that staff put together is the correct information. And I think what happened was that if there was an older draft, because the top step is correct, but the other two are not in the memo for Coffin Associates. We can have them issue a clarification memo after it. But what is in, in the, in the staff table is the correct.
Can we, can we hold off on this then until they issue that clarification? It is a significant amount of money. It takes this job position that creates this assistant analyst two becomes the third, the fourth, the fourth highest paid person at the city that's, that the salary is tossed out at like $69,000 on the analyst two, $77,000. Senior management, that's all, that one, that one, $77,000. A senior, a second analyst that we're hiring where Coff had it at 48,000 versus 69,000, which is $21,000 all the difference, and not generally ten. If that means that we need to wait, wait till the next council meeting to have that clarified, I'm certainly good with that too.
I think, given the, what we've got, I think we need to take this matter until we get some more information from Coffin Associates and then bring it back to the council at that time. That's all. Yeah. Items two and three are, are tabled. Do you want to retract your motion?
I retract that motion and then the other motion.
Okay, we get the information. Is there a second?
A second, that one.
And. And we have a motion and a second to table items two and three. Let's have a vote please. Motion passes four zero with one F. Next item is staff manager, city manager, and staff update, page fifty-two of our packet, city manager.
Issue Mayor Cortez Johnson on the council side, page fifty-two of your packet. So just going over the work over the last couple of weeks with the paved project with S.T. roads. Went overall very well. We had some pretty significant work on Aloha as well as on Ogle and some other streets throughout town, including Dixie. Just one of the common questions that staff has received and that we wanted to just make sure that anybody listening is clarified on. Questions regarding the extension of the pavement along Ogle Avenue to the north end of Ogle. The, the problem associated with the north end of Ogle Avenue is that the water lines underneath the road are in need of replacement. In addition, there's some pretty severe drainage issues along that road. And so the council gave direction that, and for, for good reason, to avoid paving sections of road that were knowingly going to have to rip up and replace the infrastructure in, in the near future. So it is targeted for some drainage enhancements, which are in the five years queue that the council arranged. And, and then we also have a grant pending for the water, a grant application pending for the water line replacement in that road. So that's a common question by, have certain roads been, are getting paved and others are not. There are some other significant roads that have deteriorated that also need additional work. So they are not currently on the list. Some of those roads include the Second Avenue, which is, if not the worst, one of the worst in town. Elk, I believe, Elm, excuse me, Elm, and a couple of others that need some underground work related to them. So with that, I also was hoping that our wastewater superintendent Derek Taylor could also provide a quick update on Tesla.
Yes, Mayor Johnson, the council. After I read my staff report for some little revision that I made contact with project manager Tesla, and we mentioned that late Friday, he got in contact with P G D to come find our site visit to check on appearance, approval for the installation of battery packs in its current design location. Once we get word from them, permission or denial, we will move forward. But at this point, Marcells and Tesla are looking forward to keep into the project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Yes, Mr. Wilson?
This is two city managers. On the paving area of the paving project, is the money that, the money that we've allocated the five hundred thousand over five years is, is, a lot of that coming out of the sales tax initiative that comes up at general fund or is somewhere else?
So it comes, that project is exclusively funded by the general fund, which is made up of multiple components of funding coming in. Notably, there would be sales tax revenue in there. There's everything from T O T to cannabis taxes, which is the most recent, pretty significant increase in terms of general fund.
Is there any way that we could, I guess, give credit to the, you know, obviously part of it's coming from the, there you see all kind of general funds. So say what part of general fund is doing that? So that the public can understand that, that sales tax money is going towards the senior street so that the next time that we ask, so when that expires and we ask for it again, that they see that we're, what we're doing with it, so that we get it. Because this is a good use of, I think it's one unbelievable fact for a city that with this paving, you know, being done. The public appreciate that, you know, support, so we want if we ask for more money to do those, put aside and deploy the newsletter.
Yeah, I would say the, you know, from staff's perspective, there are really kind of two critical developments that have gotten the city to where it is today. One of those would be the original passage of measure U and the extension of measure J. Certainly put the city into a position where it was not talking about further reductions to, to city services that are already, at that point in time, pretty minimal with very limited revenue coming in. The other key component of this was the passage of land use policies that allow for commercial cannabis development as well as the passage of measure X, which is the cannabis tax measure, which this year became the general fund's largest single source of revenue to the city.
Just a suggestion, city manager, that the next newsletter that we give mail out to everybody in the community, if we could kind of summarize that, maybe with some pictures of, you know, the improvements to Dixie, Aloha. I think it would help explain to the community and, and give them thanks for their support over the last half dozen years or so, or the tax managers that have enabled us to do the paving of these streets. Any other comments? Yes?
Oh, I just have a question to chief. Sergeant Bushnell, I was looking, is it, can we work Officer Fielder or Sage is pretty much a very hard kind person?
Officer Fielder also works for the Fermaill Park Department and is retired. His significant other requires his presence at his home.
I thought maybe so. I saw him today and that's what made me think of it.
He, he works one day a week and then occasionally, for example, on Lawland, he'll be working both Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you.
But he's pretty.
Any other, any public comments? Any comments from the audience? Moving on to the next. Item on the agenda, special call items. Number one, appeal of water and sewer charges, three twenty-five Berkeley, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Cortez Johnson. Members of the council, the side begins on page fifty-nine of your packet. So page fifty-nine includes the, the staff briefing of this particular issue. There are ultimately, you know, three resolutions to this request, which is an appeal of water and sewer charges for the three twenty-five Berkeley Street or specifically the sewer portion of the charges. One is to reject the appeal. The second is to waive late fees and reject a remainder of the appeal. The third is to grant the appeal at full. So those are, there is a fourth option, which would be to continue the, to continue the meeting and to request additional information if the council needs additional time. So there's, I don't think there's a specific rush for this particular item. But pages fifty-nine and sixteen include the staff briefing. And then you look at page sixty-one is the appeal made by the Mike Huesler, the owner of the set property. So with that, we'll go ahead and return back to the mayor for a sense if there's any questions or comments to staff. And you, city manager, council members, are there any questions, comments?
I can talk. I have things to say. Um, reading through this, it seems to me like what we're up against is how we define the word customer, right? And does it mean somebody's a customer? It seems like the city says we're a customer if we buy a house at Riedel or charge this last sewer rate. And it seems that Roman, am I getting that right? Mr. Huesler feels like if his water wasn't turned on, he didn't ask for water, that he doesn't count as a customer, right? So to me, that's the underlying issue. I can say, I live in that area and it does look, it's really nice to drive by that house. I do think there's been that fit. I would be upset if I, I would appeal the bill in that situation, too. I do understand that we do have a municipal code and those are the rules. And I do see that it's sometimes harder to, you know, you don't want to set precedent, which I understand. But I do think that as a citizen of Riedel personally, I didn't know that I got charged regardless of whether or not I had water service in. So I was just going to suggest moving forward that maybe we could make that more clear somehow. I mean, I know that not everybody comes in saying, I'm going to buy this house, but I don't want water service for another year. But maybe if somebody does, we give them a special chance though. So I'm not weighing in on what exactly we do, it's just, these are my thoughts.
City manager. So then just to, just to clarify, there's, there, there's two different functions here. One is water services.
Right.
And the other is, is wastewater services. So under the municipal code, wastewater is treated differently in that those with access to or receiving services from are subject to that minimum charge. That's been a policy for quite a while. And in any case, you know, the city probably could do a better job of advertising that to, to the public, making sure that folks understand, understand that. But I just want to maybe make it clear that really what we're talking about here specifically is, is going to be sewer.
Any other comments, council members? Yes?
It is, it is, it is, I'm going to say it's ambiguous, it is unclear. Our water serving is, and that is part of this, I understand, part of the study that we're doing is supposed to make it simpler so that people understand. So I don't know, I don't know if Huesler was in his knowledge of whether or not we bought the place to be this level for the sewer bill. I don't know what that is, what people do, I'll ignorance and no excuse and lawless. But it is, it is one of those things that the citizens buy the property and they clean it up and they're trying to make it better and they get charged even though they're not using, in use of that services or whatever. So whether it's a terminology thing or what, I don't see where the city's having anything like, not charged by it. Not charged, I don't see where this is being heard, whether it's a policy or not. That's how the motion is created, it's how we handle it.
Councilor Wal.
So during the eight months, did we send a bill out for at least the sewer? It said that the elevators for the base sewer rate were not received by Mr. Huesler. So did you not send out a bill for the?
So I, we'll see if Cheryl Dillingham is on the line to answer that, that question.
Okay, can you hear me now through the mayor? The bills were sent out, but they were returned because we did not have the name of the person who currently owned the property because he never came in after he purchased the house.
Cheryl, where were the residents?
They were sent to the prior, they were sent, I believe they were sent to that address, addressed to the prior resident. And I believe the post office returned them because they had the prior resident's name on it and they knew that that person was no longer there at that residence.
Yes. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Oh, and I was going to say, and, and the ladies in the office had no, we had no way of knowing who the person was that had purchased the house until they, he came in to request water. And this, this isn't the first time this has happened where a person has bought a house and maybe not moved in and not turned on the water and then come in and, and to, to show that they own the, they have to show that they own the house. And so then they show the date that they bought it. And basically, all of those people have been charged for that base sewer rate back to the date that they purchased the house, even if they hadn't been living in it and they hadn't had the water turned on. And I do believe the way that that base rate is calculated, it's calculated on the number of sewer connections in the city. And then that is the base rate. So in other words, we know how many people are connected and we multiply that number out to come up with the base amount that we need to operate the plant.
City clerk, did Mr. Huesler apply for a building permit?
Yes, he did. I was aware. I knew that he was the owner, but the front office and the back office don't always communicate those things, so.
The city, the city had knowledge of who the owner was and what his residence was, just by the.
I knew that, Kevin knew that.
Yeah, so he applied for a building.
Yes, he did.
Yes.
So then, so when did the water get turned on? At what point?
Cheryl, did you hear the question?
Okay, there we go. I'm having a hard time getting unmuted. We, the water was turned on in April. So these are charges from September through April. Did you hear me?
Yeah. Given as many facts as we now have, what would the council like to do? Mr. Wilson?
I personally would like to see the, the bill waived until April because it didn't look like, there was communication to him to be responsible for it. That would be my take.
I would concur.
Councilor Wal.
I would approve the waiver for the two hundred and fifty-nine dollars in late charges and water charges reject remainder of the bill where he still is in sewer.
So you would, even though he did not receive any bill for, what, eight months or so, seven months?
It was still an option for him to, it was there for him. And that's how with everyone else, that's why they get charges, they're for them to use. I can understand the water, but.
Okay, I mean, I think we're ready for our, is there anybody in public like to speak? Yes, please, come, come forward and.
So on the property, I'm writing on some rest of the, as a matter of fact, ten of your guys in city staff knows me and knows I purchased the house. I actually found out about it from city staff. I would gladly, and I still would gladly pay in sewer because it is pretty clearly written. Now, I, I came tonight to disagree with it on a matter of, we have a new company this time. And you guys talk about economic development and hiring somebody to do this, but you're shoving contractors out of this town faster than they're coming in. You're shoving developers out of this town faster than they're coming in. I've been in construction twenty years. I've lived in this town forty years. I'm only forty years old. It means I've never lived anywhere above this town. Everybody I know says, don't build Riedel, don't do nothing Riedel, don't make Riedel nicer. I start to understand why. I'm getting hit with, I saw about four hundred bucks. I paid four hundred bucks. It's about every nickel and dime the city's done to all these other past contractors. And now it's happening to myself. I sold a lot of Grandmont Heights three years ago. I sold a lot of Grandmont Heights three years ago. The gentleman's buying the building because the red tape, the city's put those through. If the red tape doesn't stop or at least slow down, this town's not going to grow. This town's going to stay alone, come down and spend the last hundred years and we're never going to get better. Yeah, we want to spend $69,000 a year on sootage for economic development. I'll tell you why it's not developing, because we pushed it to the point that people can't. They're going Fortuna because they're going to make 40% higher profit on their projects. I took this project on, it was the worst house in town, in my opinion. I hold 55,000 pounds of garbage alone off of place, probably 100,000 pounds of grain waste. I didn't do it because I want a free sewer. Now, it was a shock to me when I went and had my water turned on to get an $800 bill or $600 bill, whatever it was. I don't, I'm not in disagreement of paying sewer because it's clearly written in your guys' orders. But I would like the city staff and the city council to take another look at these because there's a reason owners building down here. There's a reason you guys don't want to see lumber racks go into this town. It's the $400 here, the $400 there, the hey, Mr. Huesler, we want you to put in an ADA sidewalk. There's a reason why my sidewalks aren't done down there. Well, in about two weeks, welcome to south side of town, Third and Berkeley is going to have the first big sidewalks in town. It's ridiculous, it's ridiculous. It's driving the builders out, it's driving the developers out. They need to change and this is going to stand this low slope the whole entire time. Everyone can blame COVID for people not building, go to Fortuna, go to Erika, go anywhere else and they will tell me. Construction is thriving, I know because I'm there. I'm not here because I just can't seem, see the deal. So that was my point of showing up tonight. You know, if the council elects that they want me to pay the sewer, I'm not those. There are feelings, I do think that it's an unethical bill when, if you don't have water, in my opinion, you don't have sewer. You can't flush your toilet. If I don't know that, I'd have a free sign out there, dump your RV right here. You know, I still might do that, I don't know. That's sarcasm, I'm not going to do that. But what I'm saying is we got, the city has to change their ways where the contractor department can come back in town. We pushed everybody out and it, something needs to turn around here or we're going to stay this same little town forever. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
A motion that we grant you the deal with.
You made a motion to option number three, grant you payment full. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries a three to one vote, council member Wal in the negative and Mayor Constance. Moving on, page number two, appoint, appoint a few council members to beautification, walkability and pride committee. Page 63 of our next step report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Rosen Johnson, members of the council. So at the regular meeting of June 15th of this year, the council adopted the ordinance creating the beautification, walkability and pride committee. The committee is made up of two members, the city council, three members of the public. The purpose of the committee is to provide an annual report to the city council with specific recommendations for projects that enhance the visual aesthetic and wafering quality of Riedel. Notice that vacancy was posted on June 17th, 2021, with the final date of submissions of application by July 16th. So at the time of publication, no applications were received for members of the public. As such, the date for submission was extended to July 30th, 2021 for potential appointment by the council at the August 3 regular meeting. Staff's recommendation is to go ahead and appoint the two council members at this meeting in anticipation of a standing to appoint the remaining three public members at the coming city council regularly scheduled.
Thank you. City clerk, is there any additional interest?
Mayor Rosen Johnson, we have, I have one email from someone who's interested that will be submitted an application by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I know that council member Carter has expressed a huge desire.
Yes.
To be on this committee and so has Mayor Garnes. Any, any other comments?
I think you have to break it up. Beautification, right? Certainly appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So consensus is Carter and Garnes are appointed to beautification, walkability, pride committee. And number three, on the community hearing, public hearing authorization for city manager to sign a agreement with Larry Walker and Associates, $38,571 consultation services, rate for wastewater treatment plant permitting. Discussion of possible action, page 65 of our package, staff report for city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Rosen Johnson, members of the council. So every five years, the city has to seek and receive a national pollutant discharge elimination system permit, NPDS permit for sure to operate the wastewater treatment plant. So this regulatorily wise is where really the rubber meets the road. But these permits can vary in length from state to state. So I believe that in Kansas, as one of our former wastewater secretaries likes to remind us, their NPDS permit is about eight pages long. In California, it's a different story. And I believe Riedel's permit verges in excess of 200 pages, somewhere, give or take. Don't quote me on that specific number, but it's a fairly lengthy document and a fairly lengthy process. So every year, that regulation has ratcheted up through the basin plan and through the state water resources control board, really culminating about 10 or 15 years ago in the, the city's really inability at that point in time to meet any of the NPDS requirements with the older style plant that the city have. So the council may recall, there was a development curtailment issued by the state of California that limited the ability of the city to do building projects for private contractors to do building projects in the long term. So that process ultimately led the council at that point in time to build the current wastewater treatment facility that we have, which is an advanced activated sludge facility. It is, in terms of the Gill River watershed, probably the most, currently the newest and the most expensive facility on the watershed. However, it meets the regulatory requirements that protect the water quality of the Gill River, which is a freshwater basin. Certainly if we kept the older plant, there would be significant violations of penalties. We would have eventually been forced to build, well, we would, we were forced to build the plant anyways, so. So that's the, the general background of this, this permit is extremely important in terms of how we react to, react to what the water board wants us to do. Last year, we probably received the most strict and stringent NPDS permit that the city's ever received for that. We did upon the recommendations of our neighbors, hire Downey Brand as, as an attorney to help consult with the city staff in terms of, of the process five years ago. And so now today, the attorney is recommending that the city utilize Larry Walker and Associates to help the city through this latest NPDS cycle. And this is really my very well spent because we don't ultimately want to be meeting requirements that are in excess of the law. So there's the regulatory requirements and then there's the law. And we want to make sure that we're pushing back appropriately on unnecessary regulatory requirements, such as testing that doesn't even register with the outfits that do, you know, wastewater quality testing, practical things like that. We need expert advice to, to help us with in this process. It is a very complex regulatory area. And we are fortunate this go around to have excellent staff with Derek Taylor, the last go around. Council may recall, we didn't really have any staff consistency in our wastewater division. So this go around, the recommendation from staff was to hire Larry Walker and associates to provide those consultation services to make sure that the NPDS permit that we have protects the environment, but also protects our rate payers in the city from paying more than is necessary to protect the river, which we all feel is a very important thing to do. So with that, if I skipped anything or missed anything, Derek Taylor is here to answer any questions that you may have. Derek, was there anything that felt that needed to be added to that?
Derek Rosen Johnson, members of the council, I feel city manager not did a good job explaining current, current situation that we're faced with in regard to the upcoming permit renewal. It is a pretty complicated, drawn out process that starts now and it will finish after hearings and a little bit more research, you know, research into what our last five years look like and what the next five years looks like in view of the state. We do have limited resources in terms of personnel and it is quite a project. And at this time, I recommend that we put the, the $38,000 to hire an outside consultant to usher us through this next operating process and kind of keep things really stable.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Wilson?
I agree with Mr. Taylor and city manager. If, if we were able to figure this out, Mr. Taylor could probably consult. It's complicated, it's California, it's with their rules. I agree we should put the support in.
Yeah, I, I read through our last NPDS permit, all 187 pages or whatever it is. And it's, it's monstrous, it's very difficult to understand, even for engineers, it's difficult to understand. And we certainly need help in getting a fair shake, pushing back where we can rightfully push back, accepting what we rightfully should accept and not, not a dollar more. So I agree with staff's recommendation. Any other comments, any public comments, audience comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree, and it's every five years, so when you look at it, it looks less over a five year period than.
Yeah, and we're going to be saving money for five years. What a doctor.
And I'll just say, we have a really good plant down there. You know what we're saying about one of these technologically advanced, eco-friendly, doing a good job. And it's nice to have city staff that I trust. So you say you think this is a good idea, I'm on board.
Do we have a motion? Hold on. You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, please vote. Motion carries four zero, Mayor Garnes' house. Council reports and communications. Representative Councilman Wilson?
Yes, we had an HWM meeting right after our meeting last, last time. And I reported previously that they were making a headway with CRV last. Not making a headway, the state began is living around the regulations and how they want to deal with this bottle bill. And so the, the people that want to do a hammer roll out of Crescent City didn't want to put out a couple $300,000 to find out that they weren't going to benefit from the legislation that the state still not make it up their mind on. So I guess you still have either a storm in your backyard or hauling it across the city. The, the general consensus of the, of the HWM board was to support hammer roll and try to get something because they can make something work. So they're on board with trying to get there, just get it past the state or anything.
Is there any indication when, when the state will come up with a legislative attempt? That they're going to make this little project, so several more months is going to be.
And glass is another thing they lost, HWM may have lost their ability to haul glass. Whoever the glass hauler was, don't follow garbage. Glass is a big deal, the bloody wax is not worth it. And so the way that you, they dealt with it, they just put it on the floor and go, or the loader broke it all up so they could get it, get a truck and they can haul it off somewhere. But now they don't have somebody to haul, haul the glass away. So what do you, there's a lot of storage space associated with recyclables and what to do on the issue, it's a space issue as well, so. People need to buy, buy stuff that doesn't get recycled. If you're buying the water, water bottles, your own water bottle, do things that don't use bottles yet, you know, containers that have to be recycled. You know, that's, yeah, that's a no-no. You're supposed to have, you're supposed to have a, a, a patrol car. Stop, that's, that's politically correct. Yeah. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Councilor Carter?
I sat in on that meeting too, just because I was interested, but no, other than that, I didn't have any ideas, thank you.
Councilor Wal?
Yes, I had an HTA meeting, it was our first meeting in person. We also looked kind of hybrid because they also were doing this with us and it worked real well with having some of the members on the council and people here in person. We adopted the fiscal year 2021, 2020 final budget. And also the ridership is down due to the COVID. And so the staff is working on incentives, they incentivize people to start riding the buses again. So they're looking at some things on that. I went to the fire department, four directors meeting and number one, they said they worked well with the officers on the 4th of July. And this, you know, they had gotten together beforehand and they were appreciative of that. Calls, I'm going to read because sometimes I think we don't appreciate them enough for all they do. Medical aid, 40, they had 75 calls in all, medical aid, 49, public assist, three, fires, one, false alarms, nine. Fire degrees, one, hazard conditions, one, fire vehicles, four, and traffic collisions, four. And they did a good job on that.
Was that for the month of June?
Yeah, that was for the month of June, so 75 calls. And they're getting ready for Wildwood Days, which I'll be happy with. And just a reminder that tomorrow's the municipal maintenance committee meeting at 3:00 in Fenton in person. That's it.
Thank you. I have several items. First, the HCO meeting scheduled for 13:00 AM has been canceled. Tomorrow morning, you know, LACCO meeting, at which time there'll be consideration of Riedel's request for annexation of the city's sewer disposal field. Big item for the city. And I've got a couple other items that are really near and dear to my heart. One of them is when Riedel was becoming a kind of more of an upscale community and we had paved road and sidewalks on both sides of the, Mercer Fraser didn't work in 1940. And at that time. And at that time, they placed flag holders in front of virtually every business in town. Now, some of those flag holders have been removed because there's been a driveway plant. There's been a change in ownership. There's been cracks in the sidewalk, the sidewalk was replaced. But if you walk through the southern half of our community, you will find literally dozens of flag holders in the sidewalk. And I think we need to clean those out and get them back in the circus. I talked to Nick Angelo of the Chamber about it. He thinks it's a great idea. I volunteered to go out there with my rotor hammer and auger out a bunch of holes so that come next holiday, we can have some flags there. Of course, I'd like to agenda this out for a future meeting so that we can have a fair discussion in accordance with Ralph and Brown Act. Also, at a future meeting, I would like to discuss police department staff. As council may remember, at some of our previous budget meetings, I was an advocate for having one more police officer that we needed because police officers, their mind of business is dangerous. They get hurt in line duty. As we see with Sergeant Bouchain, they get hurt at home. They have needs for vacation. They have needs for huge amount of training time. They have needs for huge amounts of court time when they're doing arrests. And I, I think in light of recent events, I think we need to bring that back to the council and have a robust discussion about it. That's all I have. At this time, I'll air, you know, city manager.
So Mayor Breton Johnson, I recommend that you get a consensus of the council to have those items on.
On the matter of Michael Holt, what is the opinion of the council? For it. Okay, on the matter of discussion of police department staffing, what is the for it? Okay, so we have two consenses for it. And again, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss.
I will make that motion.
Motion. Is there a second, Paul Sayer? Motion and a second. We stand sure. Thank you.